Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls, City Council Meeting for Tuesday, March the 5th, to order roll call.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Olss?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
McCusker?
Yes.
Shoebloom?
Yes.
And Mayor Robinson?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm glad to see everybody could dig out and get here tonight. This time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda submitted.
移到
Second. A motion by Merrell, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Move on to item five, public input. Citizens may speak to items not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing as there is no one that wishes to address the council for public input, we'll move on to item six, the consent agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For those at home, I will read the consent agenda. Item A is the just and correct claims for the accounting period in March the 1st, 2013. Item B is the meeting minutes for the February 19th, 2013 city council meeting. Item C is application for payment number one of the pedestrian bridge rail repair project. Item D is the library project change order. Item E is the community development director position description update. Item F is the tower lease request. Item G, utility connection agreement. Item H, interchange project partial purchase offer. Item I is the resolution 2005 authorizing acceptance of monetary donation for the fire department. Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down?
D.
Which one?
D.
D?
Library.
That will become item seven, D. Any others? Seeing as there are none, Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item D.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Merrell, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moves us to item seven, the council business, and that will be item A, which is the mantra, levy legislation.
As I said in the memo, and also we included just with this most recent update, the actual legislation that was presented from SEMCRA that, I guess, we have the SEMCRA director here too, so you can probably explain some of this as well in a second, but, you know, I think that basically, like I said in the memo, what they're seeking is the ability or the authority to levy up to 25% of their authorized levy on their own. Right now, they require 100% approval of their levy from the various county boards that are involved in their service area. There's been a number of email discussions and in-person discussions among city administrators, county administrators, and as far as opinions on it, and it seems to be the general opinion has been that because the SEMCRA board, while it's an appointed board consisting of mostly elected officials, it isn't the same as a county board that would be making this decision at a county board meeting, those sort of things. So I actually haven't heard, but again, I can't say that I've spoken with all of the cities and counties involved, but I haven't heard of any of them that are supporting the legislation. I've seen, you know, most recently, Wabashaw County today sent out an email saying that they passed a resolution at their last meeting opposing it. I know that the other cities in Goodhue County are also opposed to it. I have talked to all of them. So, you know, it's just a situation where it appears that the general consensus is that decisions like this, as far as levy authority, should be made by an elected body, such as the county board, the way it is now, and there really isn't, you know, it seemed to be a need for this change. But with that, there's all sorts of information that SEMCRA has as far as why they see the need for it. I think it's probably just easier, Joel, if you want to kind of give them, you know, the SEMCRA side of it and see.
Good morning. I wish to say good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come here. I can speak partially on behalf of the board, SEMCRA board, as well as what we've heard so far to date. We actually have the City of Kenyon mayor, they did not bring it to council, we had not asked that we bring it to council, we were just really asking for the opinion of the mayor and the county commissioners, and I know each body does things differently, and that's fine. We, I tried to call as many mayors and county commissioners as I possibly could, but you have to look at four counties that were, so I wasn't able to talk to every one. But I can tell you, the City of Kenyon was a positive, have not. The only other two cities that I have heard from was Zambroda and Cannon Falls, and it wasn't from the mayor, it was from the city administrators, and I will be in front of the Zambrody City Council Thursday night, actually. This is a little bit different, and this is the argument of SEMCRA. Number one, under Minnesota state statute, the county boards now have the authority to appoint themselves. So technically, we could have, and we're a four counties, so we have two appointees by the county. And then there is a federal requirement, which is also under Minnesota state statute, and by the way, we're formed just like the city is under Minnesota state statute. The county boards do have the ability to appoint two county commissioners to our board, so technically, we could have eight county commissioners on our board. They have chosen not to do that, but I can tell you, we advocate to at least have one county commissioner on our board, and then we got kind of a mix. Now, there's, and if you talk to Northwest multi-county, for example, whatever, their opinion's a little bit different. We like some diversity, so if we can get like a realtor on board, a banker on board, a business type on board, all those things help us bring that perspective in. One thing that we do not control is the resident commissioner, which is anytime we receive federal funds, we have to by law have a resident commissioner on our board. So we have a nine-member board, okay? What makes this a little bit different, as a multi-county housing authority, it's not like, I'm going to use Cannon Falls as the example, you guys set your levy here, this body. If you cut 25% of that levy, then the city pays, you know, you take, you've got to make the appropriate adjustment as a city, and the council has to be accountable for that decision. I don't care if it's 25%, 50%, or whatever it might be. SEMCRA doesn't have that luxury. A multi-county housing authority was created for the efficiency purposes, and by having, and now we have four counties, and each county, as SEMCRA has always done, has what I always refer to general overhead and other things, and I'll talk a little bit about that, those five items. And those five items that we've always used that, what I put in that 25% category would be to cover SEMCRA's overhead portion, so their portion of the overhead, such as office space, office equipment, pens, pencils, commissioners per diem, those kinds of things. We also provide information referral to constituents throughout the county. So if we have a business that calls us, or we have a constituent that calls us looking for first-time homebuyer financing, we work and provide that service as part of that service. We cover administrative shortfalls, and this has been huge for us, Section 8 rental assistance. Two years ago, HUD cut our administrative budget by 21% and did not lighten regulations, and I can tell you, it's actually gotten worse, it hasn't gotten better. So we have a whole array of regulations that we're responsible for, yet we got cut by 21%. So each county paid its fair share based on the use of the Section 8 rental assistance program. I currently have three counties that did not pay their fair share, Goodhue is not one of those, and so then we get heat from the other counties. Well, you better not be using levy that you're levying here in our county to carry Dodge County, for example, or Houston County. So our board was forced to, we had dialogue, we invited those counties, some of the county commissioners in, all those things. We're not talking a huge amount of money here. Dodge County's fair share was like $2,000. So what we ended up having to do is freeze any new participants participating in the Section 8 rental assistance program, from participating in the program. We didn't kick people off the program, but as, as an elderly individual, for example, would pass or go to nursing home, that voucher opens up and ends up in the other three counties. So technically, right now, we have three counties that we have a freeze on, where no new applicants can get that assistance. So that creates that dilemma. By having this authority, that goes away, and so that's, I'm just giving you an example there. Develop and write federal and state grants. This actually comes to a city advantage, and I can tell you, I've been doing this for a long, long time. I've dealt with lots of different political bodies, local political bodies. Again, encompass four counties, I've got four county boards, and I've got multiple city councils that we work with, and SEMCRA just doesn't come in and do things without city technically coming in and inviting us in to work out an issue. And I'm going to use what we've done, this goes back a few years, but Cannon Falls, we have done downtown revitalization projects, housing rehabilitation projects to families that were at 80% of the county median and below. We actually worked with Cannon Falls in this last go-round, but we weren't invited in. D kind of changed its format, so we did not submit. So we want to continue to work with Cannon Falls to strengthen that application, so we can submit it again. And they didn't like the idea that we didn't have a downtown component built in to the application. We had a great need for families that wanted the housing rehabilitation, but we didn't have a real strong downtown project, and they kind of wanted, and they kept asking, well, why? Cannon Falls is a big community, it's got a pretty good-sized downtown, so those are things that we're going to need to work with the city on. And I, we can't, D will not, Department of Energy and Employment will not talk to us until after the deadline, which by the way, was last Thursday, and so now we'll have an opportunity to sit down with them and find out, well, why didn't you like the application and get specifics? But that's an example. The other thing would be is a big, so in that scenario, within that 25%, if Cannon Falls wanted to develop an application to do a grant-writing project like that, we can put that in the 25%. So if we go back to the county board and they say, you know what, we're going to cut, 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 and we're not going to fund that, well, then Cannon Falls is out, and then Cannon Falls would have to figure out a way to fund it. If we had that authority, we'd be able to do that for the cities. And I can tell you, in Goodhue County, by the way, Goodhue County has been, this legislation really is non-issue for Goodhue County, because Goodhue County has financially supported SEMCRA, not only in its fair share of doing all these things, they've always said that's great, they see the value of it, they've actually approved projects, and to give you, which quote would be in that 75%, which is and should be political, and that would be Whispering Wood and Trailside. And I don't know if you guys know where those projects are located here in Cannon Falls, but a number of years ago, we had a city that really wanted to get some affordable housing for the elderly and for more market-rate family, not low mod, but semi-affordable market-rate housing. So we worked with the city to develop that application, and that was, and then we asked the county to come in and do a GO-backed bond, and doing a general obligation bond by, backed by the county, gives us the best possible interest rate we can get to make that project as strong as possible. We've not, by the way, we've never hit a GO, and as long as I've been doing this, and I've been doing it for about 30 years. So that's an example that we would, and we would expect the city to come with us, which the city did do when we presented this project to the, to the county board to do the GO backing of that. Now, the 25% would be used to come up with the information we need to develop that project, because we can't present a project to a county board, for example, or even a city council for review unless we have the facts, figures, all that information to even present it. So that would come from the 25%. So that's an example of a project that we have done in Cannon Falls. And then cover bond shortfall. So if we actually had a bond shortfall, and the county didn't want to use that, we would use that as well. And where a bond shortfall has occurred for us is, is our housing districts, tax increment financing district, when the market tanked, that affected our housing TIF districts, so we've been working with the bank to actually renegotiate the loan, we're doing principal, or interest-only payment, very small principal payments, and to go over the rocky wave. So that's, that would be an example. And then disaster assistance, and I, this is something that SEMCRA has not asked for, but it actually started with us back in 1992, when Stockton got hit by a flood. I can tell you that cities and counties do a great job with the emergency, but it's what happens after the fact. When, so, and, so we've been involved in the Stockton flood there, the 2007 flood, when Winona County got hit, we've been heavily, heavily involved with that. And just to give you an example, 2007, when it occurred, we finally wrapped the final mitigation project, which was the, actually got water lines out to a Mobia Home Park in the city of Stockton that didn't have, they were on their own system, so we actually got a water main, almost, about 75% funded with flood money, and then the city issued bonds to get the balance of that. But that project, that would be an example of a mitigation project. We've done, believe it or not, dykes and that kind of thing. But '77, we just wrapped it last year. So we're not, we're in it for the long haul. We're not here today, gone tomorrow. We actually started from beginning to end and tried to secure those fundings, and we're right now involved in the 2010 flood. Cannon Falls was lucky, wasn't hit that hard from the 2010 flood, but you can know in this county, it would be Pine Island, Wabashaw County just got hammered, and we're about halfway, midway stream through that project right now, and we're acquiring about 75 homes, buying out about 75 homes. Some of those, believe it or not, always get a kick out of this, but an elderly couple, they're just about their whole life savings in this brand-new home they built, and they got wiped out. They were 94% damaged, and they were outside the 500-year floodplain. Now, they're lucky being in Minnesota, just from the standpoint that the legislature appropriated money, so we're able to use D and R money to get that family bought out. But that's, so we do do the disaster. That's where we fit that 25%. But as I indicated, and Wabashaw County is another good example of, of, when you make dramatic changes, the body, the governing body takes the consequences for it. I can tell you, I live in Wabashaw County, they fired a county administrator that knows how to run a multimillion-dollar business, and the five county commissioners that sit on that board don't have that background and experience. And so you see what's happening now, it's, they got that body changed, now we're going back to another county administrator. Meanwhile, we spent a lot of money, taxpayers' money, going through that process, because we had two or three county commissioners that thought it was time that they were going to run the county business. And this is where I give Aaron credit and so on, you need guys like that to do that. So, but there is a body that had, you know, did their thing, and then they had to live up to the reality of what their decisions were. But we're not quite that fortunate. If we get one county that cuts it, I don't care if it's, and Dodge County's been the issue, where they don't support us at all, which means that the overhead is the overhead. We don't do projects in Dodge County, other than if we levy specifically in individual cities, which we have in Hayfield and West Concord and Dodge Center. Now, think about, it gets totally away from the concept of a multi-county. Multi-county being the efficiencies by having a multi-county. If I had to go into each city council, you're talking about a minimum of two meetings, probably three, because city councils have the preliminary budget, you do your pre-approval in September, and then the final approval in December. So three meetings, all cities, look at the cost, administrative cost of doing that versus just going to the county board with our budget. Then our budgets aren't presented. If we got projects that we're working on, or I don't care if it's within the 25% or the 75%, we've already had that dialogue going with the individual cities. So with that, in a nutshell, that's my board's dilemma, they see the purpose of the 25%. Northwest is, is a good example of, they operate in five counties up in Northwest, they have never levied before. So five years ago, when this was presented, if you look at their backup, they have leveraged lots of dollars now. So, and I'll talk, well, 2012, if you look at the email that we sent out, we levied about, in the four counties, 489, 927, and your return on investment, for every dollar we levied, we brought in $23.35. That does lots of things. It not only helps people, and this is what we always forget about, and which I believe should not be political, and I hear that, you've got two county commissioners that are on the Goodhue County Board that are only focused on Red Wing, they're not focused on Al County, and we don't live in, we don't levy in Red Wing, but they still can affect how, what happens in Al County on their votes. And I'm not going to say which one, but just an example of a commissioner not asking the right questions, well, I don't care about Section 8, you can give the Section 8 to somebody else. And I was at, well, why would you give Section 8 rental assistance? And they said, well, all that does is attract people in from Chicago, and, and we don't want those types living here. And then I got into dialogue where you realize that our, I don't know what Red Wing does, but, and I would, in fact, I'll pass it on to them, but we have policies in place where you have to live in or, or work, are going to be working in Goodhue County in order to even get on the Section 8 waiting list. So that's an example. But I can tell you, we have a lot of elderly that have lived and resided in your community for a number of years that are on Section 8 rental assistance. Believe me, if they had the resources to carry it on their own, they would. Everybody has different circumstances, disabled the same way, and we always seem to focus on that small percentage of families that abuse the program. A majority of our families, I'm going to say 95% of our families are on the program about two years. They get their feet back on the ground again, they get their life stabilized, another job or whatever, and then they're back contributing to the tax, off the program and back contributing to the, to the tax system again. So some of these programs are needed, and I think those are the things that should not be political. I don't think a political body should make a decision whether we should, whether a person should stay or go, because they don't have enough income. And, and I, so I guess what I'm asking to, so that's another reason. So my board primarily is, is looking at, by at least having that 25%, we get rid of that political thing. It does provide efficiencies throughout the county, and my board's not unanimous on this, by the way, either. We have eight commissioners, I've got six in favor, two against, and it's the elected thing, and I keep hammering them on the elected thing, and will continue to hammer, if the county boards want it all themselves, they can do that. But even, even with this legislation, it still requires two-thirds majority of the SEMCRA board to approve our levy. So we still have to have a two-thirds majority on the 25%. So it's not a slam dunk even on the board. And what I see this doing is dialogue with Dodge County. Dodge County doesn't want to do something, we're not going to approve this 25% even though Goodhue, so I can see a lot of negotiation going on between my commissioners when we're, when we're looking at setting that, our levy within the, within the 25%. But don't get us wrong, the 75%, that usually is long-term, and that's what we're doing with Whispering Woods and with Trailside, that's a 30-year GO-backed bond, and we actually levy dollars every year to keep the rents semi-affordable. And if we didn't have that, rents would be higher, it wouldn't be as affordable to the people that are residing in most developments. It's not low-income, it's market, but it's more of the blue-collar type housing there. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions?
Well, not so much a question, I'm extremely leery of having a non-elected board having tax authority, because there is no accountability, in my opinion.
We have, now again, we have the same accountability you guys do, we're audited every year.
But still, they're not elected to that particular board. We are elected to this, so if we goof up, you know, people can vote us out. They goof up in your thing, they're not necessarily in that boat. It's a slippery slope when we start giving different boards local taxing authority, and I don't think that's the route that they should go. I mean, we're, it's obviously a different situation, but as a city, we're subject to the whims of a political body in the form of our LGA that we receive. So I understand some of what you're saying, but putting a non-elected board to do this is, is not, in my opinion, a way to go.
Thinking, thinking outside the box again, this is multi-county, it's not city or county.
Right.
And it can be elected, totally elected. Right, the one, I don't know if you guys, if this happens to you, but when I go to the, to the election polls, and I see soil and water, I know a lot of people don't even know what that is, when they go in and vote. Water districts, you guys have one here, that's a non-elected body, it's appointed, and they do have levy authority. Port authorities are also not elected, they're appointed by city councils typically, and they also have levy authority. Metro council is another body that's not elected, and I, but that's a sore subject, I know it's some, but some things shouldn't be political though either, when you start talking about sewer water, those kinds of things. But I'm just saying, it is out there, we're asking you to, I'm not, actually, we're not asking you to take formal action on this, but you most certainly can. If you take no stance on it at all, you're kind of taking a neutral, not in favor or against. If nothing else, that's what I'd like to walk out of here with today, and leave it up to your state officials to make that determination, but, and that's why we have state government, and that's why we got federal. I'm going to try to convince my state leaders that with this particular body, that's what it should have. And the reason why it should have it is, number one, is you've got multiple counties coming together, and there's consequences for the other counties. By the way, if a county wants to come out, well-thought-out statute, they can come out, but they just can't come out because the political body changes. They got to hold public hearings, they got to hear from the public, and then once they determine that they still want to come out, then they've got to go to the other counties, the other counties have to do the same thing, hold a public hearing, get a couple comments, and SEMCRA also has to do the same. So it's not a, a thing here today, gone tomorrow. When you come into this partnership, it's a well-thought-out statute, and there is a way out as well. But I'm just telling you, I'm, and I, and if you talk to any one of my commissioners, and we have two, and I'm going to tell you, you've got Jim Bryant, that's on our board, county commissioner, who is an elected person, and Bob Noah, who was on the county board for 12 years, and he is, he is a strong supporter of this, and a past businessman running the, the Kenyon leader. But his thoughts on it, you know, he had the same thoughts, but after he's seen what's been happening, he said, this most certainly makes sense, and we've got to try to keep the people that we serve, people that don't have, we represent, and low-income people aren't highly represented, they shouldn't be part of this scenario if that comes up into the dialogue, and it does come up.
It, it seems like, honestly, the problem is, you guys can't get Dodge County to play along. So the hard part I have with the whole situation is this, that the county boards can, you know, make this decision, whatever they think is, you know, kind of best for the county, and if Dodge County decides that they're not going to kick into this, then that's something that SEMCRA as a group has to try to work out with Dodge County, but to, to use that as the way that, well, this way we can get our full 25% for this. But every decision that any of us make is political. I mean, it's just, it's just the bottom line. I mean, the whole Section 8 program, from its inception through, is political on how it's funded, and, you know, just look what's going on right now with the healthcare exchange, you know, debate the legislature, yes, that's supposed to benefit, you know, unemployed, low-income, people that don't have insurance, but it's obviously very political. So I, I guess, like I said, the, the issue that still comes down to, that I see, is that the county board's there to, to make this decision or prove it. They've been doing it this way for a long time. If you have some counties that aren't participating and are refusing to pay towards some of this administrative expense, to me, that's something that SEMCRA as an organization with the county boards need to deal with, with that county somehow. And I don't know what that is, but to, to just say, because one county's not paying, we'll go ahead and let, you know, the board levy up to 25% to try to help, you know, take away that issue, well, I'm not sure that's solving the underlying problem with anything. I, you know, it just seems to me that, while the board can have appointed members, sometimes people get on a board and they get involved with it, which is good, but then they may not see the big picture that a county board sees when they're looking at this levy request. You know, the SEMCRA board is looking at what they do, which is important, but are they looking at the big picture of how this taxing affects everyone that's being taxed by it, has to pay for it? And that's, I think, what the county board brings when they have to give 100% approval for the levy, is that they are looking at what they do and what the benefits are, but they're also weighing that against everything else the county has to do and pay for. And I think that's important, because it's the same thing as what the council has to do. You know, we have a number of items that have to be discussed with each budget and determine what are we going to levy, but each item has to be taken into account as an overall, what's, what's the total impact? So I think that's where, when we have, we've had these conversations with the other cities and the other counties, it's, it's been that conversation that, it's not that they don't think that this is a great organization, we want to be involved with it still, it's just that levy authority should be with a body that's taking a look at the big picture of the overall levy, how it affects everyone, not just, yes, we need to do this because it's important for our mission and what we're trying to do.
The state does The state does cap housing redevelopment authorities. We are capped at the state level. We can only levy so many, uh, so many dollars. And by the way, that cap is twenty, approximately twenty-seven dollars per household. That would be if we were at the maximum levy and on a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home. So the state has given this some thought. Um, the question is, does it belong on the local, state, or on the federal level? That's why we have three different levels of government. Um, the, um, so, so there is. I mean, all, it, it's, it's a little bit different in the city. I know that the, the state can limit your cap at times, but you still have the ability to levy what you need to levy unless the state steps in and says you can't. We are capped under state statute. We can only levy XXX dollars based on, on value. Uh, I, and one more comment, then I'll just shut, shut up. When I presented the idea of an elected body to my board, they looked at me, Wheeler, you are out there in La La Land. Um, because number one, we're back into that same, it will never happen, and then we're back to that same scenario again. What is a housing redevelopment authority? So you're gonna have an elected, you know, or, or a common person coming in, walking in the door and looking at that, and, and you get Bob Noah's name on it, for example, and what is this HRA? What does it do? And there are a lot of people that aren't aware of what we are, what we do, until they need assistance. I don't care if it's disaster, or if it's mother, you know, mom that needs some assistance, or whatever, then they know about us. But, um, so with that, I'll, I'll shut up.
Does anybody else have any more questions?
Well, I got a question for Aaron. Um, what, uh, after listening to this, when I was reading about it, I was totally confused, and now I'm really confused. So, uh, um, why, why is this not a county decision? Why is it our, why are we a part of this?
Well, it, it's not necessarily that it's our decision. It's just that the legislation will directly affect us, though. I mean, right now, when Semcra goes before the county board, they have to get approval for their whole hundred percent of their, their portion, the Goodyear County, you know, portion of the levy. Um, but, you know, we, in this situation, it would be the Semcra board making that decision on twenty-five percent of it. The county could still discuss the seventy-five percent of levy, but they were there. So it affects us because our citizens are taxed on this. So the issue becomes, well, do we want the county as the elected board to continue to approve a hundred percent levy as it, as it has been? Or do we wanna do the seventy-five, twenty-five split? So, you know, when these decisions are made, it affects the overall. So when people get their tax bill and they question, you know, why has it gone up? What is this? What's that? Well, a portion of it is within the county levy, and, and that affects our residents. So we're involved because this affects our taxpayers.
No, they're
If, um, I mean, the way I read this to start with was that they were looking for some kind of a guarantee for twenty-five percent. I don't know which portion they get or, or how the taxing is all set up. You know, uh, example for me is that I understood they're getting a thousand dollars, but till somebody pays or till they get the money, they don't have it. So they were looking for a guarantee that they got their two-hundred-and-fifty anyway. That's the way I looked at this thing. The other comment I wanted to make for you, Aaron, before we vote on this is, um, he, he mentioned one thing that really hit a chord with me is that I do not, to be honest, do not know a lot about this organization. I know about him. I've read about him and stuff like that. But when he talked about Section Eight, um, if you see what I see out on service calls, when I get into apartment complexes and stuff, Section Eight is a very important thing. So if I had to vote on this to guarantee that twenty-five percent of this is gonna be to Section Eight, um, I, I wanna vote for it because I feel that's that important. Uh, elderly people that I see out there that are basically living on the edge and single moms with children that would never make it without Section Eight, it's very important. So from that standpoint, um, that's the one thing that he hit a button on with me. From the other standpoint, I'm also one of those people that don't like things to change. And I don't know enough about this, uh, to vote for it just because I, I'm too old-fashioned. I like the way things are. So that's just my opinion on this.
Okay. Can I make, excuse me, one more comment? Uh, uh, there is a five-year sunset on this bill. So if the bill goes through, we have to report back. We can report back to the councils. I'm not seeing much change for Goodyear County. I'm gonna just tell you that right now. We're only using sixty-six thousand of the hundred-and-seventy-five-five-five-two. So if you were gonna break it down into seventy-five, we don't maximize. So just because it says twenty-five doesn't mean we're gonna be at twenty-five. Um, and I, I, and, and there is, there is a five-year sunset on it. So, um, it really, and it isn't just Dodge County. Wabashaw County, when I was in front of them, they were going to cut our general levy because of a, um, housing development project in that county. Uh, when the market tanked, they were blaming us for the economy failing. And I, and I, I literally almost had to beg them. I said, you guys gotta focus on the good part. You're cutting the part that is bringing money and dollars, helping people. You can't penalize this for something that happened in the economy. We won that battle. We got a slight cut in our levy. But it isn't just Dodge County. It's other. When on a county, for whatever reason, they picked a hundred grand. No basis for it, and they lowered us to a hundred grand. So it does, it isn't just Dodge County. It's, it's all the counties, and it's based on the political body and what it believes. So.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, uh, the chair has a motion here to, or is requesting a motion to oppose the legislation proposed by Semitra, granting them, uh, the ability to levy twenty-five percent of their levy authority without county board approval and direct staff to convey the decision to our state-elected officials.
I'll second that.
A motion by Merle, second by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Okay, thank you.
All right, that will bring us on to item B, the farmer's market relocation.
So I've, I've been making a kind of attempts off and on over the winter to kinda pin down someone that we can talk to about spreading the word among the, um, among the people at the market about wanting to relocate them and try to get some input, but quite honestly, I've had no luck. Um, everybody that I've talked to has said that either they're not involved, as involved anymore, or if they are involved, they really don't recognize more than half the people anymore, a lot of new faces. So because it's such a loosely organized group, it's tough to be able to get this out any other way but by just, I would say, putting notice in the paper, on the website, on the chamber with supportive of putting it in their newsletter, and just letting them know that effective this year, we're gonna relocate that to the new parking, or to the park and ride lot. Um, and then we'll have parking next door at the new lot and, and do that. And I think, we've discussed this before. Obviously, the main reason is, is that it does cause some congestion and parking issues downtown um, when, when the market's there. We like the market, and I think it's a great, it's a great thing. It's just having it in the trailhead lot does cause some problems for downtown business owners and for the trailhead and people wanting to park and get onto the trail. Um, we've got the, with the new, um, expansion to the park and ride lot, we now have enough room to have, um, the actual farmer's market itself on the one lot and have parking available right next to it, the overflow lot. Um, so it, it seems like to make the most sense to move it down there. Um, with that, in the conversations that we've had, um, the question has come up about what about other people that use a lot during the week to sell agricultural products? Um, the general consensus is that, well, if we're not having the, the, um, uh, farmer's market there anymore, we should probably also look at letting those people know that if they wanna sell during the week, we can't use a public lot, um, but you're, you know, welcome to, they can sell in any private lot if they get permission from the property owner, or they can use the overflow lot at the park and ride for, for sales as well. Um, it would just seem to keep it consistent that way, um, and maybe not cause as many problems um, if we allow some to sell during the week and then nobody on the weekend, that sort of thing. So, so that, basically, that's what I'm asking is that, um, if that's an okay plan, to, to, to let me know, and then I'll go ahead and get that posted. And I would think that, that first weekend that they're gonna have the farmer's market, we'll have somebody down there politely directing traffic the right way when they come to set up in case they, they didn't get the notice.
Is, uh, that, uh, how much is that lot used on the weekends? I mean, I know that a lot of the employees that ride the mail bus, uh, park in that lot. I mean, as we're looking on the weekends, how much is that lot used on the weekends and, uh?
As far as what we've looked at, not much.
Only thing I have seen is some of the, uh, younger-level kids, if there's a, uh, a football or baseball game, there might be some use.
We're not seeing park and ride use for it on the weekend.
No, that, that's not, not too much.
Not much use at all, and I, and I think if we definitely post it, and we'd have it say, you know, farmer's market only those days, we, you know, put a sign up there at the entrance, and we'd make sure we, we'd have that well-posted. I, I think it shouldn't be a problem and shouldn't cause issues, because we also still have the overflow lot. They won't be using the overflow lot. Um, so we will have that as an option then, too.
The only additional thing that I would add to this, and I think this is, is overdue, is in order to help, uh, the police department out, uh, to include in this, if we go ahead with this, giving, uh, the police the, I don't know, um, how I wanna say this, um, the authority to be there and say, you know, sorry, guys, you gotta move down here and, you know.
And, and actually, a, a lot of cities, unless they specifically organize the farmer's market, don't allow, like, corn sales and things in municipal lots because it does become a problem. You get one person that does, and you get another, then you start having parking problems. So they just say, you know what? Unfortunately, it's a municipal lot. We only allow it for parking. That's what it's designed for. If you'd like to sell your product, feel free to talk to any other buddy that has a, you know, a lot downtown that, that has openings that you could use. Um, so, yeah, that would be what we would wanna have, is the police there to let them know that council decision we need
It would take a, a few weeks for
Yep.
everyone to catch on and, and go from there.
Any further discussion on this?
You know, Aaron, uh, I don't know about the weekend thing, and I'm sure it's location. I think, I think it's adjustment because, uh, of course, the traffic is higher. They're right behind. That's why they like that. It also makes more traffic with the goofy intersections we got from Econo Foods and that parking lot. So I guess the other thing I've thought of, we, we possibly could have it like across from the fire hall and that lot down there. But I don't know why that'd be any handier than being right down on the main highway there. Um, the other thing I would like to see us do, if we're gonna do this, is to, uh, see what we can do to get that trail that goes down there and goes underneath that bridge where we keep the people from crossing that highway down there. I think that's as important to this package. And, and I, uh, I think we have to do this. Our parking lot just, um, I guess the next thing is, uh, the, but the biker thing has got to be such a big thing, too. So we're trying to weigh what is bringing more commerce to our town. Uh, we want the farmer's market. We want the bikers. How do we adjust for this? Uh, so I don't think it's an easy decision, but I think it's the right thing to do.
Well, Leroy, we did, uh, yesterday, or today, this afternoon at Public Works, uh, and we're gonna keep working on it with EDA and, uh, that kinda stuff. Was that very thing, working on trying to get that, uh, trail from the, uh, park and ride, you know, coming under the bridge and into town. And, uh, you know, we may not be able to get it done this year, but we're, we're certainly working toward that goal.
Well, I think we, we got some good things to talk about later with some money that popped up here that we didn't know about either.
Any further discussion?
Do we wanna attach some kind of penalties for the people that refuse to go down to the park?
Well, I mean, we can always issue citations for anyone that, you know, it, you know, if, it's a municipal lot. So if they're, if, we own it, so if they're there and they're using it in a way that's not something we approved, it's, it's basically trespassing. And we can take a look at different options for, yeah, actually issuing citations if we had to. I'd assume we wouldn't have to go there, I think, a warning and then probably stay out of there. But if it becomes a problem, we, we would have the ability to, you know, take legal action if necessary.
Right.
Any other discussion? If not, Chair, take a motion to approve the posting of the farmer's market relocation and restrict all sales from the trailhead lot.
Some will
I'll second that.
A motion by Merle, and second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carries. Move us on to item seven C, which is the fifty-two interchange, project overpass.
Okay. This was talked about, um, actually, a little bit at the, the chamber breakfast, um, last week when, uh, MinDOT was here to talk about the project. Um, you know, basically, like I say in the memo, I mean, the, the history of the project is that obviously, Bill's been involved from day one. I've been involved since two thousand and eight at, towards the, the end of when we actually picked the final design. And it was always designed to be in, sold to the city, the, the business owners in that area, that this was an interchange overpass project. Only more recently, when MinDOT came up and said, okay, we've got twenty-four million dollars. We assume the project's gonna cost thirty million dollars. With this twenty-four million, are you willing to take out that overpass for six million so we can at least get the interchange in? We brought that back to the council, and quite clearly, it's the right answer. I mean, if that's all we can get in, at least it does alleviate a lot of problems. It does take out the two stoplights for safety. It opens up that whole south area for development, but it's not ideal. Council knew that. But at the same time, you can't, it's hard to turn down, you know, the twenty-four million dollars that, that was available. So, fast forward to bid opening, the bids came in substantially under. Um, depending on, you know, where the right-of-way costs come in and things, I mean, they could be five-plus million dollars under what has been allocated for this project. Um, so with that, when you take a look at that overpass, if you, if you kinda use those same bid numbers, we're probably looking at maybe a four-million-dollar project instead of what was estimated to be a six-million-dollar project. Again, we don't know for sure until you bid it and all that, but it's reasonable to assume you'd get the same basic bids, at least amounts as you got for the interchange, um, that, for this overpass. So, the issue is, is what MinDOT's saying is that their money is on a timeframe. So if it's not tied to a project that's been bid and approved by June thirtieth, it goes back into the MinDOT general fund to be used in other projects. Um, what we're asking is that they give us another year, just to see. Because we won't know for sure what our right-of-way costs and things are until probably June. Um, MinDOT has said they'll have all the right-of-way done before construction starts in July. So we, we'll know by June what the final costs are, and we'll know how much is left. So if we know in the middle of June that we have a eighteen-million-dollar project, and we've got six million dollars left, we would then have a full year to go ahead and get the plans put together, put it out for bid, and probably get the same low bidder that bid the interchange to bid this. And the money's there, doesn't cost anything, anything, anybody any more money. It's using money that's been allocated. It's just that we're asking that they hold it for another year for us to have that opportunity. Um, we've talked a little bit about, with the legislators about, and if it doesn't get used, we can say, well, let's use it for a different project in our district then. And, and that was when we had the conversation about maybe the county nine issue and, and if, you know, because the issue could be is if, who knows, right-of-way costs come in very high, and we're only left with two million dollars. Well, that's not enough to do the project, do the overpass, so instead, use that money somewhere else. Legislators are gonna decide how they wanna do that. We'll leave it up to them. Um, if they wanna include any wording about using it for nine or something else. But, uh, you know, basically, the bottom line is just, we're not asking for more money. We're just asking for another year to use the money that they gave us, they've allocated for us. Uh, MinDOT District Six is kinda backpedaling now and saying, well, we would like to do that overpass when the traffic counts justify it and those sort of things. And, and our clear argument has been is that, the only time that the traffic count conversation has come up is since we decided to split the project, and you told us that it could, you put it in your budget for twenty-nineteen, but it could happen sooner if the traffic counts justify it. But it's not a valid argument to say we're gonna, we've always said we're gonna wait for traffic counts before we did that, because that's not true. Bill can tell you that. Every property owner there, down around that overpass, as this was approved, can tell you that that was never the case. So it'll be interesting to see if, if MinDOT tries to push that point further than me or not. But they, they've, they've expressed that a few emails, and we've, we've argued back a little bit on that.
They, they clearly argued that the only reason they split the overpass off was for financial reasons and financial reasons only. Now, all of a sudden, that the bids come in way under, now we hear this junk about
Traffic.
traffic patterns and all this other stuff and
Well, and I think what plays into it is
They're not backpedaling. They're, they're running away.
Yeah, they wanna use the money somewhere else for a different project, but, I mean, Senator Schmidt and Representative Kelly have been very supportive when I've talked to them about this. Actually, the senator already has a bill drafted, um, so he is getting ready to present that. Um, and I wanted to make sure we get the council to talk about it before he does, to make sure there isn't any issues with it. But, you know, again, we're not asking the state for more money. We're not asking the state to promise us that they're gonna do the overpass if the money's there. All we're saying is, leave the money that's been allocated for another year. If it's there, do the project like it was approved. If it's not there, you guys figure out what you wanna do with it and go ahead. That's fine.
I mean, all they gotta do is encumber it, right?
What's that?
All they have to do is encumber it for
Right, another year. Yeah, that's the thing. If it doesn't work here, and we, we don't have enough, it turns out that we can't afford the overpass Yeah, that's the thing. If it doesn't work here, and we, we don't have enough, it turns out that we can't afford the overpass, it's not like we're saying we have to keep that money forever and we'll use it when we make it up the difference somewhere else. They can use it somewhere else.
And the interchange project itself is, is scheduled to start in July, but it will go through September of twenty fourteen, which gives us that year of time for any changes in designs or anything like that, the land acquisition, et cetera.
Well, and the overpass project itself is, is very, I mean, it's a pretty simple project, honestly. I think there's maybe three parcels that need acquisition. They already bought one of them. Which again, is concerning for MinDOT to say that we're not really planning on doing this project till the traffic counts start, then why did you buy one of the parcels for this overpass already? You know, if that, so their argument doesn't make a lot of sense when they've already committed money to the overpass, and now to say, well, we don't need to do it now. Well, it, you know, it, it, it's a little interesting. But all we're asking for is a whole another year, give us a chance. If the money's there, do the project.
You know, Aaron, it's so hard. I just wish that there was more of a working-together attitude instead of this division stuff all the time. I just, you know, I can think back to when we first talked about this, and the overpass, of course, was important, but I could live without that, that second bridge and stuff. The one thing that I thought would have been so important if they'd have put a right-hand turn lane into that cannonball and super American stuff. And at the planning commission at that time, we brought that up. And they said it couldn't be done. If, if, there's too many problems. Well, now, I grew up to Hampton. I've been working up there for the last week, and I've had breakfast at Oscar's, and we got a right-hand turn lane. So how am I supposed to have any confidence in these people when, when everything shifts? Now, I know some people maybe like turnabouts. I don't, I don't know why, but they do. And we're getting a turnabout, and nobody else does. I don't understand that either. And you can't tell me that doesn't cost more money, and we didn't ask for it. If, if you're gonna have extra money left over, I would say it'd be more important to get ahold of the county and work on that twenty-four and twenty-five going across to our school. But it doesn't, I, I don't even see any purpose, uh, purpose bringing that up, because it just goes no place. It's like nobody cares. I, I have your, I'm so glad you have the patience to work with this, because I've, I've never had patience. So I'm so grateful that you can do this stuff, because I think of it, about all the stuff I've been involved for four or five years, and I, I can't make sense of any, but I, I just feel it's worth us to even talk about it, you know?
Yeah, it can be frustrating. I mean, I mostly just vent to Dave about it, since he's been involved with MinDOT longer than I have. We generally keep it internal at least that way, and then, so when we do meet with them, it's a little, little better.
Well, when I'm by myself, I use different words than I do now.
Okay. Any other discussion? Not, Chair, take a motion to approve the, requesting that our state legislature introduce legislation that'll carry the project funds over for one more year to determine if the north overpass can be completed, closing out the project.
I'll second.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And that brings us to item seven D, which is the library project change order, and.
I got a question on the library, you know, on, let's see, on the east side, that time when it was raining, and I mentioned that, you know, and I, when they were here, and they said it was because of the frozen ground and some other stuff. It was all figured in, but now, it's like a change order.
Well, no, this is different. That, that east side there, it was basically just because it's not finished there yet. When the ground thaws and everything gets done, we'll actually fill it in right. It'll get sloped right. It'll get seeded right. It won't, it should not have that run to the front and, and come out. So that's not this.
But yet they show it on the one, unless I'm.
You have to do show it on that side.
Yeah, they show it on that one map, on, on the east side, yeah, on the east side there.
Oh, yeah, but it, they're just using a base drawing. That's all, the only thing that, it's, it's just a base drawing for the project, but what we're doing is on Mill Street, that, there's a, you can see that kind of little strip. It's just adding that little strip there all the way straight down. That's all this is talking about. It's not to address, if you look on the top part of that, well, it depends on how you're looking at it. I'm looking at mine, so. But that east side next to the bed and breakfast, that part there, that doesn't, we're not doing anything with that at all. I mean, we will, but not till the ground thaws.
Right, they're gonna do it to.
Once the ground thaws, we'll backfill all that. It'll be sloped correctly, and it's, and it, it'll be, it won't be running out onto the sidewalk and causing the ice. It's gonna go back the other way, the way it's supposed to. It's just that with it, it's like the same thing with that little grass area by the front door. We can't do anything with it until the ground thaws. So.
On this one where they're bidding, or not bidding, it was on construction.
Yep.
Install a four-inch drain tile along east wall.
But, but that's, let's see, which one do you have? Okay, so what happened was, is when you make a copy in black and white, the red, that crossed out, some of the stuff, for some reason, must not be showing up, because that's not what's happening at all. It's, maybe you got an older version of it even, too. Oh, yeah, okay, so that fourteen eighty-five's been crossed out, the.
That's fine.
So that's, that's the issue. Okay, so when you look at, they say the total amount's at five thousand three twenty. It's actually the four thousand.
Seven eighty-three.
Right, because we, we, that part's not getting done. We're not doing anything over there. We're not putting drain tile in. We're not doing anything like that. So I think what happened was, is either I gave you the wrong one, or for some reason, it didn't get crossed out on this one, or whatever it would be. But it's on there, you're right, but we're not actually doing anything with that. And all we're doing is just that sidewalk kind of across the front.
That's good.
Yep.
Well, that, that stuff in the front there, Aaron, has all this been gone over with Gail? Are we just taking this on?
No, no, this was Gail. Gail is one signing off on it.
Gail's been a part of this?
Yep, she's been part of it from the beginning. She's signing off on it. We're not, you know, because we're not gonna get rid of that whole, you know, that open area by the front door. We're just, we're just gonna make the sidewalk and even width all the way down from the.
Well, I assumed you were gonna pour the whole thing.
Well, I think a few of us thought we were, and for some reason, it never happened. So I'm not sure, from what I understand, it got, some of us thought it was gonna get done. The other ones thought, no, no, we're gonna leave it for flowers. And it ended up getting left, is what happened. So actually, I was surprised when it did get blown there, and a couple of the members of the committee were surprised. And the others were saying, oh, no, that's what we wanted. So something got lost in that little part, that's all. But I agree, it should be right up to the building. It, it doesn't make much sense otherwise. As you look at it, it's just gonna be a problem.
Right.
Big problem.
So, besides this, has anything been brought up about the parking at all in the back? Any issues with that, or?
Well, we know that we have to keep it clean, always in the winter. In February, March, we're gonna have some trouble with water and standing water and possibly getting frozen, because there's not much drop up there in the back. So the Public Works knows, and the library staff knows, to, definitely, they'll be on top of that. We'll, we'll be brushing it with the, with the big broom sweeper. And then we'll also, when there's stuff that happens during the day, they do have a mini snow blower and a shovel up there that they're gonna clean off that handicap area where it's low, to make sure nothing accumulates there either.
We, we did discuss that at Public Works this afternoon also, that issue, and, and all the solutions we come up with.
Right, yeah.
I'm more concerned, Aaron, with the street parking.
Well.
And, and I don't wanna get into that night, tonight, but I, I know it's gonna be an issue, and I know it's gonna come.
We actually have had that conversation already, that it may, we'll, we'll see how it goes.
Okay.
But it may have to get changed, because that's gonna be tough.
Throw in there that if it's gonna stay the way it is, it isn't big enough. If we do have to make some changes, we would always have the possibility of closing that alley and moving that all the way to the outside. But I do believe we can just solve it by angle parking.
It's already been talked about.
I've just been waiting to hear something, and I have.
Well, it has been open long enough with people parking back there, but it's coming, I would assume, so.
I know it's coming.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? If not, Chair, take a motion to approve the library project change order as presented.
Second.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Brinda.
Just like to thank the council tonight for the continued support in community development, economic development and planning. I appreciate that, and I know the groups that I work with do as well, so thank you for that. Maybe just mention to Leroy that next time the MinDOT issues crop up, we'll maybe, Aaron and I'll give you a call. You can come and join us.
I'll listen anyway.
I think you'll fit in.
I'll try not to speak.
I think you'll fit in.
Chief? Just a reminder to our residents that although it's close, winter is not over yet. We had another snow event that required ticketing and towing. We had, I believe, eight vehicles that were towed. I think nine were ticketed. One got out there before the wrecker arrived and, and moved it. So we must realize that it shouldn't have been there. We will be doing ticketing and towing again this evening, especially in the downtown area, to, to get those streets cleaned up. And then this weekend, it looks like a wintry mix. I haven't talked with, with Tom or Dave yet to see exactly what they're expecting. But this time of year, they, they do get concerned if the temperatures drop and they don't get the streets cleared, they get even worse until they thaw out. So they do try to keep them clean, especially with these heavy wet snows. That's all I have.
Aaron?
I don't have anything but. I do have Justin tonight. He wanted to get home with the road conditions and didn't wanna stay for the meeting, so I said, that was fine. So I will be reporting for Justin. He wanted to let the council know the library hours, which are ten to five on Monday, ten to seven on Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, ten to five again on Friday, and ten to two on Saturday. So those are the new hours, and then he also wanted to remind the council that the grand opening is on March sixteenth at one o'clock. And otherwise, that's all he had for me, and I don't have anything.
You don't have the same accent. What's up with that?
I know, I worked on that. I told Justin I could practice that. He didn't give me a lot of time.
Merle?
Nothing.
Nothing. Uh, no, I don't think so.
Leroy?
A couple of things. I delivered a petition. Twin Rivers called me yesterday and said they had put together a petition that they would like presented to the city and to the state of Minnesota. So I picked that up for them today and delivered that to Aaron about the crossing down there. I think there was, there was quite a few signatures on there. I didn't count them. So I wanna thank Twin Rivers for doing that, and we will definitely, Aaron said he will follow up with Matt Schmidt and, and our representatives in the state with that. The other thing that I wanted to comment was on, I keep, I keep thinking that the shocks we get at the city is gonna stop one of these days, but then we got the thing about MediaCom this week with a ten, ten-year-old contract that we finally figured out we got. I think it's, for the council and the staff, I think it's kind of a big thing. I, I told Aaron, I said, my first reaction was, wow, Aaron did a good job and found another thing out there we didn't even know we had. I said, my second reaction was, we've had three administrators, and how come none of them could have found this before? And I said, my third reaction is, I don't, I don't understand why we hired an auditor to take care and watch all this stuff, and they never found it in ten years either. So I, I think that was a little bit weird. But I think about the, the sale of our, our piece of land out there for the state project. I think about this money that MediaCom owes, owes us now. It's quite a, quite a large sum of money. And I think the council and the staff should think about, what are we gonna do with this? I guess some of my ideas would be, we sold the land. It's actually taxpayers' money. Maybe there should be a tax refund. If you did do something like that, I thought about it, it would be a small amount of money. We have so many things that, I can tell you, Tom Bergerson has got like three projects on hold till two thousand fifteen or sixteen, that if we put a little money in there, these things should be fixed now, but they're not in the budget to then. We could actually take part of this money and get them things fixed that need to be done, and we could pay ourselves back in two thousand fifteen. There's a lot of good things. We got that trail we'd like to get from that overflow parking to get down underneath there. Maybe there's a possibility we could use this money for something like that. So rather than just throw that into the general fund and just get the general fund up to sixty-two percent, I would rather the council and staff would think about, how can we invest this money and make things a lot better that we're waiting for? So just wanted to bring that up, and that's it. Thank you.
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Uh, only thing I've got is, like I say, congratulations to Clay Bros, our city of Cannon Falls, our Cannon Falls High School's state wrestling champion. Congratulations. I think we had a third-place finisher also in his class. So congratulations to the wrestling team for, for a good season. And with that, the Chair will take a motion to adjourn.